Okay.
You did you say?
Very good.
Yep.
Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting of December 21st, 2017. Would you be kind enough to join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all very much. If you are watching this at home, that means it's Monday, December 25th. Wish you a Merry Christmas. We are going to the...
What did you say?
I said, if you are watching this at home, Harry, it's Monday, December 25th, and I wish you a...
The 21st.
The 21st, you're right. No, today's the 21st, Monday is the 25th. You do have this right.
Yeah, but the meeting where it is on the 21st...
So we have a show to be purposeful watching this meeting on Christmas Day?
I said, if they're watching at home, it's Christmas, Merry Christmas. Okay, well, you can see how easy it is to be on the town board. Okay. Very good. Just a few announcements, many of them good. First of all, we'd like to let you know that the enrollment period for the summer camp scholarships, those are one-week scholarships through the Department of Environmental Conservation. There were two of them, and that period has opened. You can find out more information on our website, it'll be posted there tomorrow. The deadline for the applications for the scholarship, and this is for Red Hook residents who attend school in the school district between the ages of 11 and 17. The deadline for those applications are January 12th, 2018. And Jen Kavanaugh, who's the Conservation Advisory Council member in contact for this program, I think Jen's with us, holding someone else's baby in the audience, thank you very much. The other announcement, we'd like to let you know, if you're not aware, we found out just last week that the governor's Regional Economic Development Council approved our partner Winnick Land Trust's application to acquire over 300 acres along the Sawkill and up and through towards 9G to protect the buffer regions. And that's a key component of what we've proposed to be the village-to-village trail from Red Hook to Tivoli. And so there'll be a lot of work between now and then, but the funds are used for acquisition of those parcels, and we're very excited to report that to you. The other good news, fresh off of the presses, I just came back a couple hours ago from a meeting with Department of Transportation, and I've been informed that DOT is going to grant our request to lower the speed limits on both river road and 9G as we have requested. This is very exciting. We've been told that this is really something difficult to accomplish, and we appreciate the folks at DOT who took a second look at it. And we're happy to report for all our residents in that, but that'll be done this springtime, when it's safe to go ahead and change the signs. With regard to 9G, it's going to be a two-year trial period for...
Where to where on 9G?
So on 9G, it's going to be Kelly, all the way up through the Tivoli intersection and past it to Peachtree Court there. It'll be continuous at 45 miles per hour. We were just talking about some of those very tricky intersections there, Bucks Corners Road and 9G, and Kid Lane and 9G, and of course, Harry over by your road there, Clay Hill. So this is very exciting. As part of the agreement that we've sketched together with DOT, they're asking for us to do an education campaign, which obviously we'd be happy to do, to provide some enforcement for those roads, and also to utilize a speed sign which we've already appropriated in last year's budget, 2017 budget. So it's all very exciting. There'll be a letter of understanding that we'll be working on together that you'll see and hopefully approve in the upcoming months or so. So very exciting there. Those are the announcements that I have, and does anybody else have any other? Okay, very good. Steve?
Oh, I have an announcement, sorry.
Sure, please.
We just put it out on Facebook, and the flyers will be out soon, but just mark your calendars for January 13th will be our annual e-waste collection event at the recycling center. So we just want to get the word out now while people are thinking about Christmas, and maybe they'll be upgrading and all, you know, moving things around and out of the house, or looking at what you have. We'll put all the details on our website, and it'll be out on Facebook, and I think we'll be putting it on Panda and all kinds of places. But January 13th, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, there'll be an e-waste collection event at the recycling center. And I think limited pickups will be available in the town and the village, so stay tuned.
For those who need assistance?
Right.
That's right.
Only for those who need assistance, yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, Sarah. Steve, I apologize, but I failed to show the agenda at the beginning of the meeting, and these are the very few items. It's a very short agenda, but the few items we will be discussing this evening for the folks at home. Okay. Very good. Thank you, Steve. We'll begin with public comment period. Is there anybody here who would like to make some public comments before we begin? Our agenda items. Oh. Very good. Okay, young man.
Just talk right there, that's good.
It'll pick up.
Thank you.
Would you like to state your name for the record? And if you'd like, you could look at the camera there.
This is Isaac. I like new, I mean, I like Red Hook, and I think it is a very clean and neat place to live, and I live there.
Very good, Isaac. Good comment. Thank you, Isaac.
You're welcome.
I think we agree with you up here, that's why we're up here. Thank you for caring. Isaac, are you related to anybody here this evening by any chance?
Um, Sarah and Gordon.
You are?
She is my mom.
Okay, that's good, I'm glad you're admitting it. All right. Very good, thank you, Isaac. Anybody else like to make some public comments? Okay, looks like Eleanor might want to. All right. I think Isaac was a little more eloquent. Very good, so tonight, our first item on the agenda is continuing discussion of the next steps with the potential of a municipal solar farm project. And we have with us Jeff Irish, who will help us walk through a little bit. I've got your presentation, who will help us with an update on that proposal. Jeff, if you would like to come up to the screen. Or to the mic, whatever, whatever you prefer. Whatever you prefer, Jeff.
So my name's Jeff, and I like Red Hook too, and I want to make it even cleaner by generating a lot of its electricity from the sun. So my name's Jeff Irish, I'm a professional engineer, I'm also the president and owner of Hudson Solar. We develop, design and develop and build solar electric projects like the one I'm about to talk about. We did, for example, the two systems that are on the roof of this building, the system that's on the roof of the transfer station. Sometimes we choose not to bid on projects, we did not do the one that's over by the fire hall, but we're active in this industry. And I've been working, helping the town kind of move through the initial steps on this project for a while now. So just to recap, I was here in July, and I explained then that about two years ago, now it's been two and a half years ago, New York State introduced a program through the Public Service Commission order allowing community distributed generation to be built and constructed throughout the state. They set a series of rules and guidelines as to how that is to be implemented. The goal was to open up solar for what they call the other 75%. Those are businesses and homeowners who cannot cite the solar system on their property, either because their rooftop isn't suitable, or they don't have enough land, or they're surrounded by trees, or they just claim they don't want it on their property. So the first systems are beginning to come online now. I think when I was here in July, I said there were about seven statewide that had been turned on. We're now up to 13 as of a couple weeks ago. We turned on our first one, which is number 13, and it was the first purpose-built community solar system in the Hudson Valley. It's in National Grid territory.
And where was that at?
Town of Claremont.
Claremont up here?
Yes. So just a quick view, this is basically what they look like. It's rows of solar panels that sit silently, they're about seven and a half feet high at their highest point, fairly unobtrusive, low profile to the ground, and that's what they look like. Next slide. So you have a particularly attractive site here for a potential solar farm, and that's the well field that's on town property owned by the village. It's zoned business, so there are other uses which could go on that property. I think some of those potential commercial uses might have issues or problems, given that it is sitting on top of the well field for the village, but a solar farm would not. It would quite easily be accommodated on top of a well field like this. We've proceeded with Central Hudson. I was here in July, you authorized the payment of some money for the engineering study with Central Hudson, that's been completed, and now we're kind of at the next step. And we'll just give you an outline of the project. We're contemplating is something like about a 6.8 acre solar system. It would be 2.2 megawatts DC, 1.7 megawatts AC. That roughly speaking, that's large enough to generate electricity for about 350 average The project would connect to the 13.2 KV heater that runs along this street here, which is, leads up to the chocolate factory, and that's where the fire hall is on. As part of this project, the project would be extending that three-phase feeder above ground through poles up to about here. That's the little system on the transfer station that we put in a while back. And then we would go buried from there underground to a transformer pad located about here next to the well field. So one benefit of this project is, you know, the town has been considering putting a rooftop solar system on the highway garage. The current highway garage is a single-phase electric service, and by bringing three-phase close to the highway garage, this would facilitate and greatly reduce the cost of utilizing that highway garage roof.
Could we go back to that picture here? But what is the size of the parcel that those 6.8 acres of panels would encompass?
I do not have the total parcel size, but the total size on that, your lot is about 10 acres.
It's 10 acres owned by the, that's not all owned by the village, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
So the 10 acres are owned by the village?
Yeah.
And 6.8 of them would be...
I think it's actually more like 11.
It's actually 11 acres.
11 and change or something like that.
11 acres and 6, something, 6.8 would be in the panels.
Yeah. That's the area of the fence perimeter.
Is that, is that the same scale as the...
60% of the...
Smaller than the scale of the plan I have here?
Uh, no, that's...
Is that actually 6.8 acres?
You have the same thing that's up on the screen?
I know, I know, but even in this, in my first look on this, it looked quite small, far less than 6.8 acres.
We're pretty sure that it is 6.8, I mean, the drive's a...
Well, I'm sure it's 6.8, but is this, is this plan showing 6.8?
Yes.
The total includes where the water tank is, and the old village highway garage is just two, correct? It's all the same lot?
Not the highway garage.
No, there's...
The firehouse. Does it go right to... This is the firehouse.
But that's the old village highway garage.
The village garage.
The village garage is on that same block.
I know what the firehouse is, yeah.
I believe there's two parcels above, but I can get the parcel access a little later so we can get accurate.
I mean, just asking that and throwing up so we know exactly what is on that total 10 to 11 acre lot, that's all.
Okay.
There's another water tank there, and that's not the most recent plot point in there. There's another water tank there, too.
Doesn't show the solar panels either, right?
And I'm writing this myself, this is not the same scale. It's actually...
Yeah, this is a dated aerial photograph, I think this is the highway garage, is it?
Yeah, right.
Right. That was when the foundation was being there.
Exactly.
This is the latest version we got off the board.
But that's 6.8 acres, that's the question I think we need to clarify.
Area of the perimeter fence.
18.3.
It's 18.3 acres, okay.
Well, what's 18.3?
The parcel.
Parcel.
The parcel is 18.3?
Yeah.
There's two parcels there.
Yeah, maybe.
This is parcel actually.
Okay.
But there's two parcels that the village owns.
Okay. So 18.3 acres, Laurie says, for that parcel, Laurie?
That parcel or that parcel?
The parcel.
For the main...
That may be, that may be the total acreage, but that includes what's on the firehouse. The firehouse is on a separate parcel.
Okay. While we continue to research that, shall we go to the next slide? Because I know Jeff has to leave for another appointment.
Okay, so this is very similar, just some updated numbers from what we talked about in July. The concept is that the solar system would be purchased by a finance company that would pay for it, a third-party finance company. The reason is that there are federal tax incentives for depreciation and an investment tax credit, that, both of which have survived the new tax legislation, fortunately, that's coming down federally. And a third-party finance company could access those, whereas obviously the town could not. They get monetized over a five-year period. So the concept is that the finance company would pay for the construction and would own the system. It's roughly about a $4 million project. For years one to six, they would sell electricity to the town, village, Tivoli, and residents at rates approximately 5 to 10% below the utility prices. So there'd be automatic savings to all of those customers. 16% of the output would go to approximately 25 Central Hudson utility accounts for the town, the village, the Tivoli, Village of Tivoli, and the library right now. The other 84% of the energy output would be available for residents in the town and Next slide. Now that arrangement can continue. The finance company can continue to sell electricity to the participants through year 20 or 25, but there's another option that the town has said they may be interested in, and that's that after year six, the town could purchase the system from the finance company and then own and operate it. At that point, the town, village, Tivoli, and the library would get free electricity for the next 20 or so years, and the residents would be able to save about 50% off of what Central Hudson is estimated to be charging at that time. Next chart. So the decision that's really in front of the town again here, as it was last July, is you do nothing, because you don't, no one has to get a solar system. The easy thing to do is just to continue to purchase electricity from the utility. If you do that, based on your, on the current usage and a forecast of 1.9% continued inflation in Central Hudson's rates, the town, village, and Tivoli and the library, those 25 utility accounts would spend over the next 25 years about $1.1 million in electricity, and the residents that could benefit from this system would spend about $9.6 million. So you have a total spend of about $10.7 million that would be going to the utility for electricity that could be generated by this system. Alternatively, if you go with the community solar project, under the purchase scenario that I outlined in the prior chart after year six, the town, village, Tivoli, and the library would only spend about $0.2 million or $200,000 on electricity for years one through six. And then the residents would be purchasing electricity from the town who owns the system for the next 20 years, and they would spend $4.8 million doing so. And that would be sufficient to retire the debt, pay the principal and the interest that the town would have to incur in order to finance the system, and also pay for the ongoing operation and maintenance and customer management of the system over the next 20 years. Add those two numbers together, you get $5 million, you compare that to the $10.7 million on the do-nothing scenario, and there's about, you know, in the range of $5 to $6 million in total community savings that would be available here through clean energy over 25 years for the town and village. Okay? Last chart is the timeline. The timeline for projects like this are dictated by Public Service Commission order and a document called the Standardizing Interconnection Requirements for New York State, and that's what this project is moving along. In July, you authorized the payment for the engineering study by Central Hudson. They returned the results on October 5th. They said that the engineering costs to, interconnection costs to connect this project to their grid, including the extension of the three-phase lines, they're estimating at $316,928. That includes a 25% contingency, so it could be lower than that. That, we were pleasantly surprised by that number. Sometimes these numbers can range from a million, I've seen them up to $4 million for projects this size, but the reason why this is so low is because this is right now the only large project that is applied for interconnection on this medium voltage feeder going into the Rhinebeck substation. So the next milestone is January 4th, it's coming up fairly quickly. This is dictated by the Public Service Commission order. There's a 25% payment that's due to the utility, $79,232, that has to be paid and received by the utility by January 4th. If you make that payment, it locks in at that time an approximately $200,000 NISERTA grant for the project, and it also locks in a compensation rate in what's called VETER tranche three, Value of Distributed Energy Resources tranche three with Central Hudson. And what the tranches are, is that as more of these projects apply for interconnection to the grid, the compensation rate from subsequent projects drops down. And that's really to protect the utilities' revenues and also ratepayers who don't participate in these kinds of projects. So there's a cost of waiting. If you wait, tranche three is already fully subscribed in Central Hudson. The commission has ordered that they continue to accept applications in tranche three, but they could at any meeting close tranche three and issue an order determining what tranche four would be, which would definitely be a lower compensation rate. So at this time, you would still be able to secure a position in tranche three. And then NISERTA funding right now, there's 11 funding blocks. We are about one foot of the way through the very last funding block, so at this point in time, if you don't lock in that and other projects come in, if the funding is available on a first-come, first-served basis, that could go away too. What the utility will do with that, we've been going back and forth with them, because just paying this 25% doesn't mean you have green light on a project, you have a lot of other work to do to figure out, you know, how to put it to bid and that kind of thing, and your terms and conditions, but the utility will spend, we estimate maybe about $5,000 of that to develop what's called construction timelines, construction timelines for their work. They're required to develop those construction timelines by the same standardized interconnection requirements, so you can't really stop them from doing that. But you can request that they not start purchasing any material or clearing any trees or anything like that, and they'd be fine with that. Then the next milestone will be six months later, somewhere around the 4th of July, the remaining 75% payment would be due. So at that time, either you would have to say, yes, we have a viable project, the numbers look good to us, we're going to go ahead, or you could just say, no, we'll stop the project, ask for your $79,000 minus maybe this $5 or whatever they've spent developing your timelines, and you could walk away from it, relinquish your position in tranche three, and also relinquish your NISERTA funding.
So is that written down somewhere that we can look at? It's not in the letter we got from Central Hudson about the refundable deposit?
Yeah, that's, that's the way...
Is it written down?
Well, there, the current SIR says that they have to develop construction timelines, and that's it. You can request that you do nothing further. And...
No, no, I mean, as far as if we cancel the project, then we would get the unspent funds returned.
If they don't spend the funds, I'm not Central Hudson, so I can't guarantee that, but the understanding in the industry is that they would return the unspent funds.
I mean, it's not this letter we got from October 5th.
That's the old letter, yeah. I sent it to Tony Ashante, who, I don't know if he sent that letter, Tony, the other day, I spoke to Mike Mosher as well, and asked them to confirm that and to give us some idea of what that, what that amount might be. And I think, Jeff, you also had something in that construct that came up to the 316 that showed that it was only going to be a minimal cost for that stuff.
Yeah, they had $1,100 for their engineering and estimating that was detailed as a line item in the 316. I beefed it up a little bit. It's an estimate at this point, that's all you can really get from it. They do the work on a time plus materials basis, so it depends on how long they work on it. But there are many projects like this that are ongoing right now. I sit on a task force called the Interconnection Policy Working Group, which is an industry utility task force organized by the Public Service Commission. There's a lot of discussion on the refundability of the 25%, and that's, that is basically the current utility practice. But I'm not speaking for the Public Service Commission or the utility, I'm just telling you what I'm seeing in the industry at this time.
Tony confirmed that by phone, and I do have some sort of email from him.
Well, it hasn't happened yet, right? Because nobody's reached that point.
No, many projects have.
No, they have.
They have?
Yeah, many, many projects, there's...
And you canceled the project?
Yes, yeah, there's been many projects that have paid the 25%. They continue down the road, they look at their numbers, they look at the VETER compensation rate they're getting, they look at the market, and they just say, no, we don't think we have a viable project. They cancel the project, cancel their funding, and ask for the money back. There's been a fairly high attrition rate to date, because, you know, this is still a fairly new field, so there's some work to be done to make sure you have a viable project.
So historically, everybody's got refunded their deposit?
I couldn't answer that question, honestly, but the utilities are not in the business of trying to take money from project developers. It doesn't make for good press. Mike Mosher, I think last night, was speaking in Ulster County, saying how they're, how wonderful they think renewable energy is, and how they're supporting a solar project. It doesn't, you know, I wouldn't think it would pass a newspaper test if you was to try to... to, if Central Hudson was to try to take unspent funds from the town of Red Hook. That's my impression.
I wouldn't see much to put in writing, you know, for $80,000.
Can I ask a-
Also, who was Nate Suckmeyer?
He's the engineering manager at my company.
Can I ask a question about the projected savings to the town? Was that including the solar panels on top of the highway garage, or not?
No, it's only for this project.
Yes, that's a separately funded, that was, we got a $100,000 grant for that project in insulating town hall, a new HVAC equipment. So, what, the nice combination about the two projects is three-phase gets brought in for the one project, and then it just quickly goes over to the highway garage for the other project. So, we will save approximately $40,000 by doing the municipal solar farm on the highway solar project, because we won't have to bring in the three-phase to the building itself that will be right across the street at that point.
Does the highway solar project offset the savings for the town's utilities?
That's already been taken into account.
That's what I'm asking.
So, right, so-
The production of solar from the highway garage has been taken into account in these calculations?
That's right, so this is, well, what she's asking is that that's been separated out, the $900,000 worth of savings that you focused on does not include that, because that's a separate program where it's net metered, you know, it's net metered for that. So the savings we will have by, it will be in addition to the $900,000, the savings that we have on the highway garage.
Yeah, the 25 municipal accounts will get an estimated $900,000, $900,000 in savings from this project. There would be additional savings that could be achieved from the highway garage project.
And when you're talking about the residents, which residents? Are there a certain pool of residents, or is it whole residents in the town, or?
That is one thing that the town and the village are gonna have to determine how they do that.
Well, how is it typically done in other, are there typical spreads for this?
Well, one thing you cannot do, or there's two things you cannot do. You cannot sign up for the output of less than three solar panels, there's a minimum of three, and you cannot sign up for more than are required to offset your demonstrated annual electric usage. So what we find in our projects like the one we just turned on is there's some people who choose to subscribe or purchase seven, some people nineteen, some people twenty-five, depending on their electric load. Most people try to subscribe for enough to offset 100% of their electric load. Some people get very excited about this kind of thing and want to save five or 10% and then 50% afterwards, you know, other people, other things excite them, I guess, so.
So what would be the, the number of residents that this would be available to? Is what I'm trying to ask.
Right, your average, if your average Central Hudson residential customer uses approximately 8,500 kilowatt-hours a year, the 84% of this system, which would be available for the residential customers, could take care of 277 of those.
Okay.
And I have a question, you said at a rate 10, 15%?
Five to 10.
How, how is that figured on the kilowatt-hour cost at the time that customer is billed from Central Hudson since they manage the grid and?
It's under VETER tranche three, it's a little bit more complicated than that. This net metering is no longer available for systems like this, that was tranche zero and one, those are filled, tranche two has been filled, now we're in tranche three. Under tranche three, what would happen is residential customer would get their Central Hudson bill the way it looks right now. There'd be a dollar total, and say that total is $200 for the month. Then there would be a separate line item, which would be a community, called a community distributed generation credit, and that credit would be, could be, for example, $150, depending on how many solar panels they signed up for. They would, that would reduce their bill from 200 down to 50, and they would pay Central Hudson 50. They would then pay the finance company about 5 to 10% less than that $150 credit. So they'd pay the finance company something like maybe $135. So it's kind of, there's no upfront cost to them. They get a $150 credit, they pay $135 for it, for example, and there's their savings.
So they have those savings right away, but-
Yes.
And then I'm just trying to picture, so they sign up for half a dozen panels. Each panel puts out how much?
Each panel puts out about 400 kilowatt-hours a year. So your 19 to 20 panels is enough to cover your average residential customer.
They're saying, so if somebody signs up for 20 panels, so they, they know what the average output is based on that, and they automatically take, well, for instance, if you look at your latest electric bill, probably six, six and a half cents per kilowatt-hour, you know, because Central Hudson breaks it down, they break down the transmission fee, and that, that varies every month depending on what the market price is and what they pay for it. So to figure that 10 to 15%, they just deduct that from what they're paying for the market price at the time?
No, it, I think what you're talking about is the supply charge on the utility bill, which may be around six and a half cents. There's also a delivery charge from Central Hudson.
Right, but the delivery charge includes a meter fee, which obviously is not gonna go away.
There's, there's three, there's three components to your Central Hudson bill, to a residential bill. There's the fixed monthly service charge, which is about $24 a month right now. That typically conflates over time. You can't get rid of that. You can't get rid of that whether you have a system on your roof or anything, or your net meter, you can't get rid of that. The other two charges you can offset under community distributed generation. And what you're talking about is if you purchase electricity from an energy service company, like an energy supplier, one of these companies that says they'll supply you clean electricity, they're only offsetting the supply charge. They're not doing anything-
No, I understand all that, but whether you do that or whether you pay Central Hudson supply charge, it's separate, you know exactly what you're paying per kilowatt-hour. Every bill, every bill you get, it tells you what, what the, what the electricity costs and then what the distribution costs you, including the meter fee.
Yes.
That's the way they work it.
So under this system, you'll know exactly what the credits are. What the finance company will do is they'll quote you a year-one credit rate that'll be something like 10.9 cents per kilowatt-hour. Or 10, what we're looking at for this system, somewhere around, the numbers we're looking at right now are a credit of about, the VETER credit, tranche VETER credit would be about 11 and a half cents per kilowatt-hour, you pay about 10.1 cents for that. And that, that credit offsets portion of both your supply and your delivery charge on your bill.
The bottom line is you're, you're paying, you're paying costs toward this project, and you're getting discounted, discounted power.
Yes.
So, so what is actually the net number?
The net number is-
I mean, that's what people will see.
The net, the net savings will, what we think at this point, I mean, we haven't seen your, your, your bid document or anything yet, all of that still has to be developed. But we're, we're looking at savings to customers of in the range of one to two cents per kilowatt-hour, no matter how many kilowatt-hours they use. And that would be for both the municipal customers and the residential customers. So you save, you save about one to two cents per kilowatt-hour, and then you get the soft benefit, which is worth a lot to some people of knowing that your electricity is made cleanly, locally, and from the sun.
That can answer the question, because you know what Central Hudson pays for kilowatt-hours, so we're gonna say, the kilowatt-hour is gonna cost us one to two cents less, because their delivery charges, which include their maintenance of their grid, and then their meter fee, obviously they have fixed costs to manage, to manage a grid and maintain their company. So anybody that signs up, whatever that mechanism may be when the town decides that, can figure on paying a couple cents, give or take, less per kilowatt-hour-
Correct.
As the charge-
Yes.
That was the question.
Yeah.
So, so there's, is a substantial, everybody would be paying a substantial cost to building this system and to the amortization of the system. And, and then, and that difference would be a set and a half, roughly, is what you're saying?
Lower, lower than that.
I understand some of that, yeah.
That's, that's, well, it's important to clear, to clarify, that's for years one through five. Under this construct, the members would be getting a substantial discount years six through 25, and all the taxpayers would participate by having essentially free electric from years six through 25. That includes the town residents, the village residents would save because they pay town taxes, village taxes, right? And so you have the village of Tivoli, we also have the library, which taxpayers here support. And then, of course, when we construct the program, it would be preferential treatment for our residents, because it's a community distributed program. So, there'd be several ways for them to-
Provided the town decides to purchase the system in five or six years. If they don't, it would be the same rate of saving.
No, I think that when we go out to RFP, that we would wanna specify that the, that this is a community project. And so whoever is the developer, sponsor, combo for this project would have to take that into account, into their pricing, that we wanna make this available for our residents, not for other folks outside the community. So, yeah, that's something that obviously is, is why this program was started.
So, after five years, it will be paid off using the vernacular? The cost of building it and-
Not, not quite. The finance company needs the subsequent years in order to fully liquidate their costs. So what they will do, what you can request in your, request a quote, is that the finance company provide an option for you to purchase the system, and they call it fair market, it must be a fair market value by IRS regulations, at fair market value at the end of year six or year seven or year 10 or whatever. And then, and they'll supply that, and then you make the decision then if you wanna do that.
Okay, so, so the people who are getting the power would have the, have the option of paying to purchasing the system, or the proportion of the system that they're using?
No, no, I think, well, you could, you could, you could construct it that way, but I think it would be much simpler and lower cost for the town to look at purchasing it and then sell the electricity, give free electricity to the 25 accounts, municipal accounts for 20 years, and then greatly discounted electricity, offer that to the-
How much is the town going to pay to purchase this?
Estimate is about 50%, I think I said 2 million dollars or something in there.
2 million?
That's an estimate at this point, until we get, until you get bids from finance companies, it's an estimate, but that, those are the kinds of numbers I'm seeing at this point.
So, if we, in the logic, we probably have to use, if we spent the $2 million to purchase it, then we would have to probably amortize that and add that to the bill of each of the users in proportion to that.
And that's, yes, and that's what this is. That's in, that's in that 4.8 million. So residents-
Panels will produce more electricity than what it costs us to buy, in theory.
Basically.
But not nearly as much as, as the numbers would first imply.
This, well, this is, this is basically it. You can spend 10.7 million dollars and just do nothing, or you can save about half back.
The only thing that would become free at that point is the raw commodity, because everybody that's tied to the grid is still gonna pay the delivery charge and the meter charge.
No, see, that's what, Jim, you're, you're getting hung up on, no, we, that's not how it works.
You'll, you'll pay the fixed, you'll pay the fixed service-
And will produce enough to offset that for-
It can offset most of the delivery and the, the delivery and supply charge.
Well, we still get a, we still get a bill from Central Hudson for the delivery?
No.
No.
No, that's what you're getting hung up on, you're both getting hung up on.
You'll get, you'll get a bill for the fixed charge, the delivery charge, and the supply charge. You'll then get a credit, which is applied, is a per kilowatt-hour credit, that's applied against the delivery charge and against the supply charge. It goes against both of those. And then you'll pay, for in years one to five, you'll pay about, you know, 85% or so, 90% of what that credit is, as your fee for getting the credit. And that's where the savings, one and a half cents per kilowatt-hour comes.
Of course, you know, to play devil's advocate, this thing is a good thing, but as more people sign on, what about the people that aren't on this? Because Central Hudson costs to maintain that grid and deliver that grid and reliable power to, everybody isn't gonna go down.
That's why-
So the people that sign up for this, you know, in essence, you know, I don't wanna see other people subsidizing them by their meter charges, because they got nothing else that, that, that's what I'm up on.
That's why we have the tranche system. The Public Service Commission went through laborious proceeding last year, we were, we had meetings every two weeks, I was an active party to the proceeding in New York City at the Public Service Commission, then all the, New York City, all the, it went on every two weeks for months. And it was to calculate and quantify this tranche system just to do that, to protect the ratepayers and utilities that don't participate in these projects, so that they're not harmed. So that, that, what you said is true, but that's already been calculated into the tranche system, and that's why we're in these, in these tranches.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, very good, and just confirming, we still have $10,000 left in our grant funds. That would more than cover the estimated $5,000 to develop a construction timeline. And at that point, Jeff, I noticed, I noticed you didn't mention one of the benefits of getting into January and February is that, won't we know at that point? You've, you've put in a very generous tariff assumption there for the panels. Will we at that point have a better sense of what tariff might be coming down the pike? And the numbers may conceivably be a little better even?
It could be a little better. I've, I've, there's a federal trade case that's outstanding with the International Trade Commission. There's been a recommendation to the President to impose duties on imported solar panels, and I've assumed in these numbers that the recommended duties from the ITC are imposed.
Imposed, okay.
So if, if they are not imposed, then the project cost goes down a little bit.
Or somewhere between?
Yeah.
And do we have some sense of when we may have a better idea of what they will be? Didn't they already make that recommendation?
It's, it's to the discretion of the President, so when he gets up in the morning and tweets, it will probably find out someday.
How visible are these panels?
How visible are the panels?
Yeah.
Well, it's required to have screening of the panels, it's required to be fenced in, yeah, and it's seven foot, eight inches in height. So it's all, it's all done with landscaping, it's all done with fencing, and I, I should tell you, we met with, we've met over several occasions, the village residents are very excited about this project for obvious reasons, the environmental and economic reasons. They're also excited about having, you know, some fencing put in around their well fields. Not that there'll always be well fields, but it's a, it's a good protective measure for, for that as well.
How, how did you say these units were, were about, so, seven and a half feet?
Yeah, they roll with the ground and they're approximately seven and a half feet. And the, what we've been proposing in all of our solar projects is to seed the area inside the fence with local pollinators, pollinator flowers and plants. The reason is that, there's two reasons. First of all, if you use, if you pick the right pollinators, you can minimize the maintenance costs, you only have to mow it once or perhaps twice a year. Professor Kivya from Bard College is telling me that he thinks it may only be necessary to mow once if you pick the right pollinators. And then, of course, you get the benefit of having a pollinator field, which will provide environmental benefits to basically every flowering tree and bush and apple orchard within three-mile radius.
Okay. Jeff, I very much appreciate you coming tonight, and I've got something else to go to. Any other further questions for Jeff before he goes?
Can we get a copy of this presentation?
Uh, yeah, absolutely, I can email it to you.
That'd be great.
Yep, it, it's similar to the one that you did a while back, but it's got some updated information, right? Especially with this, this page here.
Yeah, there's been the articulation of the tranche, the, we've moved all the way now into the last funding block from NACERTA, so it reflects that, it reflects the current tranche situation with Central Hudson.
Can I ask Jeff one question? The letter from Central Hudson says that advanced payment is to be paid within 60 business days. Then at the end, it says, at your request, we have a billing invoice created to apply your payment, the estimate provided is valid for 90 business days. A new estimate will need to be requested if payment is not received in this timeframe, which may result in increasing cost. So what's the reason for both of those two different numbers or dates? So what's the reason for both of those two different numbers or dates?
Dates? I don't know, but the utilities have their own measure of time. Their utility day is a Monday to Friday and not a holiday. So 60 business days is typically three months. So I don't know if they were- That's redundant, maybe.
No, because it says 60 business days in the first one, and then it says 90 business days in the second one.
Yeah, I noticed that as well.
Good for 90 business days. I'm trying to figure out what the real deadline is.
But we have, well, we have, we do have an email, we have a couple emails from Central Hudson confirming that the date is January 4th. And there are particular rules in the standard interconnection requirements as to how that needs to be received. So you can't mailing it, postmarking it, January 4th is insufficient. You'll miss the deadline. It has to be in their hands in a certain form. All right, so that's kind of where we are.
January 4th is 30 days, not business days.
And another question.
Yes.
Aside from being a very unusual word, difficult to pronounce, what is a tranche? And I don't want you to answer me now, but is there some explanation of what it is?
The tranche is a French word. It means drawers, drawers or levels.
It's slicing something into sections. It's used in finance, too.
Okay, but how are the, what are the details of how it is applied to this system we're talking about? And I don't expect you to explain that, but is there someplace where I could find those?
Yes, yes. I can send you the explanation of what's in the tranche level, the VETER compensation. It's called ValueStack. There are about, I think, seven components of electricity costs that the Public Service Commission has segmented out into. There's environmental value, there's localized marginal pricing, there's ICAP value for capacity allowance within the state grid. And it's, they assign different values to different elements, and that's how you get the ValueStack and tranche. NYSERTA has provided a calculator which calculates that for you. It's a gigantic spreadsheet. It takes about a minute to update and calculate. And that's what all the calculations are based off of here. They'll send it to you. It's delightful reading. I'd be curious to see what, yeah. Okay, very good. Thanks again, Jeff. So, all right, so those are the numbers. We have our numbers that we need to know. $10,000 left in the grant that we've been appropriated by Dutchess County for this project. An estimate of, you know, perhaps somewhere around $5,000 of that might go towards developing these construction timelines. So we have the funds for that. And it'll give us a better idea, even we can sharpen the pencil even more going forward to the beginning of the year when we know if the tariff is imposed in part or in whole. So, Sarah, are we comfortable moving forward and making that payment? And don't forget that these funds will be reimbursed to us by the developer. When and if the project goes forward, we're only really discussing what amount is at risk. If it does not go forward, and we have $10,000 left in that grant.
It's not really an agenda item to vote on here, is it?
Well, we have the-
I didn't know that we're prepared to do that, but if you want to seek a vote on the 25% by January 4th, what about the 75% by July?
No, I don't want to seek a vote on that at all.
No, 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 but how are they related? Once we do the 25%, then my life is at 75% in July?
No, no, you're not. Once you put this 25% down-
Unless we cancel the project.
Yeah, hang on a second. Let me answer your question. You, and Jeff, correct me, please, if I'm mistaken here. You lock in your position and you lock in that amount of funding. That amount of funding, the 200,000 roughly, is no longer at risk. You keep your position in the queue. They take-
Explain the $200,000 then, I mean.
Well, that's the whole-
That's going to be $200,000 from NYSERTA.
That's right. That's the whole thing about the tranches. We're in tranche three, which gets us approximately that amount of subsidy from the state. Jeff, do you want to tackle that? So the way, I've been talking to finance companies up till now is that you would, this is a conceived timeline, is that if you pay the $79,000 now, you lock in the NYSERTA funding and you lock yourself into VETER tranche three. And there's talk in the industry that they're probably going to close tranche three within the next month or two and then go to tranche four. And that's, you know, one of the items of urgency here. Then you should immediately start to get to work on preparing an RFP, a bid document for companies to bid on this project. And you should try to get that someone selected, a vendor selected, and a finance company, a developer selected before the 25, the 75% payment deadline.
There's only like three or four months.
It's six months. You have six months.
January, July?
Yeah. 120 utility days, which comes out to about six months. So you should try to get that all settled. If you don't have that settled, then you can just cancel your project and ask for your money back, and the project goes away. If you have that settled and you're happy with the results then, then you award the contract to the finance company. And the finance companies, the way I'm setting it up or talking to them, is telling them that they will then be responsible for reimbursing you for the $79,232 and also paying the 75%. So if the project goes forward-
So you get the $79,000- Those finance companies, okay.
That's the way it's structured. That's the way it's structured. Those become a project cost that they finance. And if we don't make the payment to hold our spot by July, by January 4th, the project goes away. The project gets eliminated from Central Hudson. From Central Hudson, and then we have to go back and do another stage?
Yeah, but I mean, there's always this old fashioned business where you got to do it by a certain date. Otherwise, you lose this. But we don't even have a decision by our community that they want this community's solar. Not that I know of, unless the committee has a different response, which I haven't seen. But I mean, don't we at some time have to get a, some kind of a public hearing to find out whether the community wants this? And then ask the board to vote for it?
Yeah, you're not deciding on moving forward on the project. What you're deciding right now is just locking in this level of funding and getting more information.
I think it looks like we're going ahead with the project. We're paying 25%, getting ready to do another 75%. But in the meantime, six months is not much time.
No, what's your-
In the meantime, we have to get a, you know, a public acknowledgement that we should do it.
Yeah, well, first, sure.
Can I just interject? You speak to the demand. I just want, there's no real way of going, I don't see a real way of going to the public to ask if they're interested until we get those RFQs and RFP back. If we, one, say, no one bids on it, it's a dead issue. We don't need to survey anybody. If they come back super high, then we have a different number to approach the public with. If they come back super low, another number. If we just float out this kind of nebulous thing, like, how can we really gauge interest without-
The balance of that though is that you usually don't spend public funds unless the public has-
But we're not spending any funds because we're getting that money back and the $5,000 is coming from a grant.
Yeah, I don't see it writing, but we're trusting everybody's word on that, right?
The nebulous, the word you use nebulous is, I think, what's concerning us, is that we see as nebulous.
Well, I get used to the word nebulous, but-
Can I just add a couple things? First of all, we've been talking about this community solar farm project forever, for two years. We've been talking about the locate, potential location. We've been talking about finding more and more information.
We, not the town board, that's the committee, right?
No, the town board has been discussing this topic on and off for the last year and-
The location, you mean?
The last year and a half, yes. We've been talking about the location. I will tell you also, a project exactly like this is enumerated in the Climate Action Plan, which was subject to public hearing and input from the public, was a recommendation of the Climate Action Plan to develop such a project at this size, as a matter of fact. A two megawatt system. And that was brought forward to the public as well, the Climate Action Plan, and adopted by the town board back in 2011, 12, what was the year? One of those two years.
But the Climate Action Plan didn't say that we were going to spend X amount of money to have a solar-
It didn't talk about money. It talked about the idea of an action to clean up the environment. If one of those actions, hold on, you know, would be to be able to create a community solar project. We're discussing financing, but you have to remember, we're not proposing that anybody spend any town or community money to develop this project. What we're saying is, in order for, to attract a developer, there's a time limit that's imposed by the way the Public Service Commission has created this relationship between the developers and the utility that they consider fair, which I don't consider fair, but it's what we have to live with. And that they say we need, once we, to ensure our place in the queue to being able to approach a developer and say, here's the conditions. What we've done is we paved the way to do this at, there's a risk. The $35,000 for the C-SER was graciously provided by the county to being able to not have us go back and reach into our, you know, to our co-owners to do this. There's another, hold on, let me finish. There's an additional $10,000 that was provided, which has not been spent of that grant money, of which we are calculating that $5,000 is the risk associated with our putting in, you know, going forward with this project to, again, ensure that we're in the queue, of which, if the project doesn't go forward, that we can't find a finance company to pay us all back for everything, including the $35,000 for the C-SER, including the $5,000 that would, any of the money that would be spent for the upgrade, which is what's going into the RFP. So the request for proposal or for quote is going to include all the monies that have been spent, even though it didn't come out of our pockets, right? It came out of, yes, it came out of, out of the, you know, from, through the county, being able to provide that grant. But that can be returned based on the way we characterize the request for quote. And that would be one of those preconditions. We're not going to say we're going to upgrade the infrastructure, and you don't have to worry about that as part of the build. What we're saying is that all of that has to be part of the quote. And we think that there are finance companies that will find this relatively attractive because of all of the work we're already doing. Alternatively, we could have started with nothing. We could have gone out and said, we want to build a solar farm. There's a piece of property over here. You got to put yourself in the queue. You've got to go through all of that particular work. This is almost, you know, shovel ready, if you want to say, you know, would be the way I would characterize it, for a developer to say, what's my risk? What's it going to cost? These are the product, these are the assets that we need to acquire. And they know that they have to pay this money. That's it. I mean, otherwise, we have nothing.
Joe Citizen always wants to know what the government is up to. I don't think we're really telling them what we're up to.
Well, it looks to me that, you know, we haven't talked about a town board over two or three years. We haven't for about a year. And our last meeting, the zoning got approved to allow this. That being said, in my opinion, it seems that we're going to risk $80,000. But it seems like it's a very slight risk because historically, the towns have been reimbursed at approximately, you know, 79 change, $80,000. And then, at that point, we work on the design of it and so on, and design in such a way that that's really the only money we're putting at risk. And when I, and then, if it goes through, we get that and we get the total cost, our cost is really zero, is basically what you're saying.
Well, and let's not forget, when and if it gets built, we saved nearly a million dollars for the taxpayers automatically. And then if they also happen to be a member, they get to say yet again, and we achieve-
Well, since there's only $5,000, I'm trying to justify my mind, putting this $80,000 at risk, although it's a limited risk, you know, for a public fund.
We've been told it'll cost around five for the construction guidelines, yes.
It's unused funds. Remember, we're not talking about, and that's what we're saying is, yes, the risk is $80,000, but it's a very low risk. The risk is higher of $5,000 if we abandon the project. But that's already covered by the grant that we already have for $5,000.
And let's not forget the risk of inaction. And I think Jeff has shown us the numbers that it's to our community members and to our taxpayers, the difference is likely $5. something million over 25 years, which is very substantial, yeah. So two finance companies that are in this business have independently looked at this project. And both come up with numbers that can yield in the range of $5 to $6 million of savings to the community. So these are businesses that exist to do these kinds of projects. And they've looked at it in quite a bit of detail, and they think they're viable, and they can deliver the savings.
Oh, go ahead, Laura.
Yeah, I just wanted to reassure you about the community's desire for this kind of project. First of all, it's super complicated, and we're very lucky that people are spending time working on this. Because this takes a lot of time to figure out, to offer a benefit to our communities. During our solarize campaign, that's when we sort of blanketed the community, talking about trying to see whether we could put solar on people's roofs. We had a lot of people, a lot of, a large percent couldn't do solar for one reason or another, but still wanted solar energy. And we got to talk about this future concept of a town solar farm. And they liked that, and they said, keep us in mind. So that's one sort of not systematic study I have for you, but it's a good thing.
Let me just pose this question up there. Well, one of those people that you're talking about, like the Barretown crowd who wanted to do the community, anybody that you're talking about when you were solarizing the thing. Supposing we do all of this, we have the vision, we spend the money, we get the financing, we get the construction. And then some federal judge says, well, you can't benefit just a few people in your community. You got to benefit everybody. You can't benefit anybody. So, I mean, this person who's applying to get into the community solar is unable to get into it. So now they're out.
Yeah, this is a-
And what, they bring a lawsuit? And what happens?
Bill, public benefit, that's the whole point of this program.
Yeah, but we're not just publicly benefiting, we're benefiting, what'd you say, 300 families that could-
No.
Sign up to get the solar.
It generates enough to offset 277. You can choose to market and offer this in any way you want.
Who hasn't been tested that way and-
You could offer that.
3,500 properties.
You could offer it on a first come, first served basis. You could make it widely available to everyone and then just distribute that grant to everyone who signs up. There's multiple ways.
So my daughter, we get in, and the next thing I know, we're being sued because of insider information.
No, no.
How does that work?
No, it doesn't work that way. It will be available. They have projects, actually Hudson Solar has projects. You were up there with NYSERTA just yesterday at your Claremont one, right? So there are projects, and they are just one of many developers who have these community distributed generation projects.
But what about the person, though, that you, you know, you're interested in, who wants to get in on this? But then they're not in the queue long enough to be one of the 300 families that's signed up.
Well, I actually already gave up another project that was already happening to the, you know, to a few people because there was one, a bird in the hand, and I didn't know what would happen with you all. So that, you know, they can buy, they're buying into a project that's happening south of here.
Someplace else.
We should only be so fortunate that there's so many people knocking on the door that we can't supply, you know, supply enough memberships for them.
Based on our discussion-
Are we providing a public benefit in that the town is getting a reduced rate for town businesses? So my tax rate is going to go down because your electric bill is going down?
Of course, of course.
So isn't that enough, that public benefit?
Of course.
And we've actually taken away solar.
So my question is-
We've given a lot of people with our zoning.
But some little guy on Church Street wants to get in on it and he can't. Well, some little guy on Church Street wants to get in on it, but he can't because there's no more room.
Can we set it up in such a way that once we use what the village, the two villages of the town uses-
Our electric bill?
16%, the 84%. Can the town own it and just sell it back to the grid?
No, it can't because this program is designed to compensate small users. Remember, there were, in the beginning, a year ago, when we first described the program, 40% of the users must be 25 KW. The whole idea of this program, which comes out of New York State, is to do exactly what's being proposed here, which is to take, to benefit the community. In this case, it's very clear, we're talking about- very clear, we're talking about all the taxpayers, the town taxpayers, both villages, talking about the libraries as well, and the residents of the community.
The reason I rose that question, though, Robert, Bill brought up a good point, which is not an unlikely scenario. Therefore, you're still benefiting all the small taxpayers in the town, if the town got all of it and just sold it back, because that would lower their taxes, that would be.
It is not allowed by the.
It's not allowed to do that.
It's not allowed by the program. The program says you must allocate it towards two meters, and a certain percentage of those meters, correct me, Jeff, if I get anything wrong, but I think I've got this part right, a certain percentage of those meters must be twenty-five KW users or less, and I believe that's, no more than forty percent must be more than that.
Sixty percent.
Sixty percent must be less than that. So it's designed, that's why they're.
It's on the average household, right.
Right, that's why they're funding this, is they want you to do exactly what is being proposed with this project near the state, and that's why they're providing such great benefits, the federal program as well. So, yeah.
Jeff, I have a question.
Yeah.
Without a three-phase, how large a system can we put on the roof of the highway garage?
Twenty-five KW.
It depends on how much you want to spend on wire and switchgear, you just need big, big wires to do it, so.
If there's not a technical limitation, it becomes a financial limitation.
I remember this one, because we met with Jeff Dome, and basically, he said, you remember this, Danny, he said, if you go fifty KW, and frankly, you need to be a little less than that before you have to upgrade into the three-phase. So, yeah, we couldn't do more than fifty KW without upgrading. All right, very good, thank you very much, Jeff. Are we comfortable, or as comfortable as we can get till we get to January, February, and we'll get more information on tariffs and all that, continue to sharpen the pencils, and we want to thank, of course, Duchess County for the grant that got us to this point where we can take a look at these savings for the taxpayers. So I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and authorize that payment.
And says somebody.
Would somebody like to second that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you very much. Any further conversation? If not, all in favor?
I want to know what the motion was.
To authorize that payment of seventy-nine thousand dollars to Central Hudson, to hold our position and our ability to take advantage of those tax savings and clean energy potential. And we have a second from Sarah, any further conversation, all in favor? Jim?
Aye.
Thank you. Harry? Okay, no vote from Harry. Bill, we have three votes.
Yes, Sarah first.
I did, she voted for it, she seconded.
Aye.
Okay, four in favor. Harry?
Aye.
Five in favor, thank you all very much.
Go ahead.
You are having.
You'll feel better.
It's re-loved.
Energy committee members, thank you very much, I think, Laura, you hit the nail on the head, it's been a year and a half of diligent work. Jeff, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We couldn't even make these applications without the engineering involved, and we appreciate all of the great work that you're doing, thank you so much.
I don't think this is fair.
All right, we have, let's see, what's next on the agenda? Oh, can we skip to reorg? Is reorg third?
That's next.
Second, that is next, reorg. I just want to quickly remind you of a couple things. I've been working and talking with community members about two committees that we need to constitute, one is Complete Streets, and one is the committee to update the LWRP, both of grant-funded projects that we need to get going on in 2018, and I've been reaching out, and I have quite a few folks interested in both of those. If you, over the holidays, however, have additional people you'd like to recommend, please shoot me an email.
Wait a minute, Complete Streets is one, what's the other one?
LWRP, remember, we have the Department of State grant we got to update our local waterfront revitalization plan, and I would just remind you, when you're thinking of folks for recommendations, know where the LWRP area of our township is, and that might help, you know, give you some ideas of who might be good candidates. I've already got a few, including a representative from Bard, because obviously they're in that, and other property owners along the riverfront there as well. The third thing that I would like to mention is.
Complete Streets, shouldn't that be out of the highway department?
Yes.
Be a lead group on that?
Yes, Teresa is definitely going to be a part of the Complete Streets committee, and so, any other recommendations, we'll, so far, been reaching out to people involved with trails, bicycling, because that's all elements of a Complete Streets program, so if you have somebody that you'd like to recommend for that, please.
If you have people who are confirmed as interested, maybe you could send out a roundtable that we know, like, who has already been tapped.
Okay, very good. The last thing is our town historian, you all received an email from him indicating that after many years, that he wishes to step down as town historian, he's making a recommendation that Emily Major become our new town historian, and Emily has forwarded her letter of interest, so if you would give that some thought, so that when we do our reorg in January, we will have a town historian, if not Emily, someone else you might suggest. Very good. And the third item on the agenda. What is that third item? It is a resolution honoring one of our own, Councilman Jim Ross, for his remarkable contribution to our community, he has sat up here, has it been in that seat for many of those years, Jim? Or did you move around a little bit, you were up here?
Second from the end, then on the end, then here, then here.
Well, we did a little research.
I'm sitting on my toes, Robert.
We did a little research, and we discovered that Jim is at least one of the longest-serving council people in the history of the town of Red Hook, including the last twenty-eight years in a row, and I think just that statistic alone is really quite remarkable, Jim, that you've been able to hang in there with us, the faces that changed throughout that time, and so we have a resolution that we've prepared honoring James Ross, and I'd be happy to read it, whereas James Ross has demonstrated a longstanding dedication to improving the community life of Red Hook, and has distinction as one of the longest-serving town board members of the town of Red Hook, including the period of nineteen ninety to two thousand seventeen, and whereas he has previously served on the town's Conservation Advisory Council, and whereas he has served as deputy supervisor during several administrations, and whereas he has been appointed as the liaison for some of our most important boards, that's the planning board and zoning boards, and whereas he's been a positive influence and energetic volunteer in the town of Red Hook, and his achievements and community contributions have benefited all residents of our community. Now therefore be resolved that I, Robert McKeon, supervisor of the town of Red Hook, together with the town board, acknowledge and commend James Ross for his selfless work, and authorize this resolution to be passed to commemorate his contribution, dated tonight, December twenty-first, two thousand seventeen. And James, we want to thank you all for all the work you've done.
Are we doing this as a resolution? It's been a lot of fun.
And I so moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Jim, are you going to argue about this?
No, but I will recuse myself.
Oh, okay, that's a good thing. I don't think you'll benefit from this anymore, then, it's probably about twenty-five cents for one of these proclamations, but we hope that you would get a suitable.
The lobby of your office.
A suitable frame for this.
Thank you all.
Because it's the least that we can do. So I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I thought maybe, is there any chance you have one little snippet of anything unusual over all those years that you would want to know upon your at least last meeting for now, that you want to share with us? Any kind of a.
Probably nothing I can share publicly.
I was afraid of that. Can you give us the PG version of that?
It's been, it's been a wonderful ride. Been a wonderful ride.
Well, yes, it's everybody's dirty little secret, we work very hard for our constituents, but what we don't admit is that just how rewarding it is to be in this position where we can at least try to do what we can for our neighbors and our taxpayers.
Yes, it is, and I've been fortunate in most of my time here that we've had a board, even if, even if we don't necessarily agree, we've always been very good and cooperative and listened to one another, and I said, you can't ask for more than that. I learn a lot more with my eyes and my ears, you know, and a lot more from people who may not necessarily agree with me in the beginning, but when we listen to each other and work out it, it's a good thing.
So when I have a history question, I have your phone number, so.
All right, all right. When Harry has a history question, think about that, okay? All right, very good. Well, again, language is not going anywhere, we know you're coming back, we're conspiring to figure out how to get you to volunteer for some other things, so, thanks again. All right, well, why don't we quickly, because I know we all want to get on with our holiday week coming up, board reports, shall we try and do a very quick synopsis of those board reports? Okay. Very good. Where are we? Who's first up? We have an assessor's report. Have I skipped? Bill, would you like to read the assessor's report?
I didn't get one.
Oh, well, there you go, it says, Bill to report. Did she put everybody's copy?
Oh, this is for everybody there.
Oh, well, no.
Well, anyway, the assessor has mailed the enhanced star renewals out on December first, and they've received from New York State Tax and Finance, from residents that have come up on the list for possible removal of the exemption, and the assessor's office is working to clarify that list, and the process is running extremely smooth, they say. For November, they had a total of eleven sales that they had to process, the highest sale price in the town of Red Hook was four-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, two-hundred dollars, single-family residents in the town of Red Hook, the lowest, for your information, was twenty thousand dollars for vacant land in the town. And they're continuing to assess the rolls, and they wish everybody a Happy New Year.
Very good. Thank you, Bill. Jimmy, up building and zoning report for December so far.
Yes, there were sixteen permits issued, twenty-five inspections completed, twenty-six COCCs issued, five complaints, followed up on a total revenue of eight thousand, five-hundred-and-sixty-three dollars and three cents by our Building and Zoning Department for the month of December.
Great, thank you very much, Jim. Bill, back to you, I apologize, Red Hook Police Department.
Well, the police department for the month had, let me just say summary, had eighty-four incidents reported during the past month, a total of nineteen arrests made, and the number of tickets issued during the month was sixty-two, so they've been very busy.
Okay. Harry, we have a purchasing activity report from Mr. Hudson.
Yeah, I have it.
Okay.
There were twenty-six purchase orders, the largest being for gasoline at a very favorable price of a dollar ninety-eight a gallon for the upcoming year. The tennis courts were about eighty, ninety percent finished, and are buttoned up for the winter, the remainder to be done in the spring when, after the weather changes.
Okay. All right, next up, Water District report, Jim?
Yeah, December fourteenth, I said, the normal water pump is seventy-seven thousand gallons per day for the month of November, eighty-three thousand gallons per day were pumped, both wells are running fine, pump volumes, well number one pumps at two-hundred-and-thirty gallons a minute, and well number two at two-hundred-and-forty gallons a minute. The coliform, non-detective, the bidney's fine, corrod and residual is fine, the water tests complete, no violations, both the one-micron and the five-micron filters are operating satisfactorily, we always have spare filters as well, they have the supply of sodium nitrochloride on hand as always, there are twenty-six outstanding work orders, they have a problem with the newest remote reader gun, badge updated, the meterhead appears to need to update or replace our meter-reading gun, they're working on that, they have ongoing circuit breaker problems, and they're working on the RFP for the pump control update, they received a proposal from Black Electric to update the control panel and so on, I think they've modified their proposal, and they're going to recommend that they, you know, we approve the cost of Black Electric of thirty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-sixty dollars, and we accepted that. The Hudson County Health Department required a fee of three-hundred-and-thirty dollars in additional paperwork, which was sent on December fourteenth, we are waiting to Dutchess County Department of Health final approval, water level monitoring is postponed until next year, dead-end hydrant flushing was done October seventeenth, and for two thousand eighteen, the worklist items of water tower work, you know, cleanup of miscellaneous inspection comments, and the well two rehab, you know, they're still considering doing that, because that was recommended, although at the present time, it is pumping fine.
Very good, Jim. Bill, you have a brief report on your ITF.
Yeah, weekly meetings in December, the task force, intermunicipal task force, continued its discussion and review of the proposed solar energy law, local law D of two thousand seventeen, which was passed by the town board on twelve, twelve, seventeen, and also continued review of the uses currently applicable in the B-one zoning district and the traditional neighborhood district, the TND, and proposed for a new hamlet business district in Upper Red Hook, and that continues.
Great, thank you very much. And last but not least, Sarah, the Red Hook Tree Preservation Commission.
Sure, the tree committee has been busy as usual, even in their off-season, they have two signs that they purchased in order to, they're like temporary signs to show when a new project has been completed, so they have those, and still look out for them in the future, they had them at the rec park sign area where they did some plantings, and where they planted new trees along Pitter Lane, and they will leave them up when a project happens, and then take them down and move them around, so that will be nice to show where credit is due. And then they used the rest of their budget to purchase, you know, bulbs and other things that will help feed their existing projects, so they are, I have to say, a very well-run commission, we're really lucky to have them, the attention to detail, the concern for the community is really outstanding with the tree commission, so, yeah, good job in two thousand seventeen.
Thanks very much, Sarah, and something that remind me to report to them, as part of my meeting with DOT today, I discussed the fact that we weren't granted permission to do some trees along the tree lawn there, Route Nine, but they will entertain, they'll bring somebody out there, and they'll take a look and see if there's appropriate spots to do it, and appropriate trees, so it doesn't interfere with things. So I think that's another piece of goodness.
You mean where the sidewalk was just built?
So if there's room there for something, you know, small, and traffic calming, they'll have their guy out there to take a look at it, so, all good news. Okay, well, that's all I have, does anybody else have anything, or any more public comments? All right, if not, we want to again wish you a very healthy and happy holiday back home, and we will see you in the new year. January sixth, here at Red Hook Town Hall, will be the swearing-in of the newly-elected county legislator, our wonderful town clerk, and new town council member, it's ten-thirty here at Red Hook Town Hall, if you'd like to attend for that, and Happy New Year, everyone. Thanks very much.
Thanks.
Move to adjourn?
Yes, I move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much.
I'm going to have a special meeting close call at some point.